Tell us when we're on.
I'm sorry?
Want to tell us when we're on?
Oh, I guess we're on.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting, Tuesday, July 9th. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I think. All right, first on the agenda is public comments. Does anybody have anything to say relative to anything that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes of June 11th.
Make a motion to approve the June 11th Planning Board meeting minutes, with corrections if necessary.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hold on, Elizabeth, before you start. I need to appoint Jane. Tonight, John Brackett is excused, so Jane will be sitting in for John. All right, back to Elizabeth.
Sure, well, naturally enough, it's probably, it's a quote or something I thought he didn't say, but... So, page seven. Line eight. I believe that I remarked that the houses near the road are sided with their backs facing that road and that I would ask that when the houses are designed by the architect, that the architect ensure that the houses look good from the street.
We don't... The Planning Board doesn't have authority over the architectural design of individual houses?
No, that's not what she's saying. She's saying that's what she said, though.
That's what I said.
Right.
She felt that they looked better from the road. I don't think it makes any sense, and I didn't say that.
Okay. It's just, that's not something the Planning Board gets involved with, though. It was a review matter.
In terms of architectural design guidelines?
Of individual houses, of single family homes?
The individual house, but the development as a whole, as it presents itself to the street, I think we do have some say over that.
But we're talking about the minutes now, so Elizabeth said that the way that she felt they looked better from the road is not what she said. Right. You said that, you said what?
That the architect consider how the houses are viewed from the road in the design.
Okay, any other comments? Do you have any other comments, Elizabeth?
Well, just briefly, on page nine, on line 37. I just think if we say pedestrian overpass, that would clarify things versus pedestrian walkway. I'm not sure.
Well, but...
Walk, it's more than just a walkway. It's the overpass bridge.
Right. But did she say walkway, though? I guess is the question. Is he taking off the tape?
It would be helpful if, when you're making note, to give us the line number.
I did.
She did.
I'm sorry.
I gave you the line on the page.
So, what are you going to say?
Okay. Pedestrian overpass is fine, we can change it.
Just clarifying what we're talking about, that's all.
Okay, anything else, Elizabeth?
That's it, thank you.
Val, you weren't here, so... Dan, any comments? Jane? Janice? Rick? And I'm all set. So... Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, motion passes six-zero with Val abstaining. All right, thank you. Next. First on the agenda for regular business is the New Market Mills LLC continues with a public hearing for major site plan at Main Street, tax map U2 lot 60A and 61. The proposal is construct a single-story 9,600 square foot commercial building near Spring Street at the west end of the New Market Mills parking lot. Restructure will house various businesses, including a small grocery restaurant and retail shops. I assume that everybody has seen the memo that Diane put out with recommendations.
Can I just ask a question?
You sure can.
Sure.
There was a packet that was here for us. Is it updated from what was in our boxes or duplicated?
I don't believe the copy of the memo found its way in the boxes. I could be mistaken. Okay, so I made an extra copy for you. So you would have it.
The date is the same.
Does this memorandum of this...
Yes.
Okay, I didn't realize that people got copies.
Sure, no, thanks. Better to have two copies than no copies.
Okay, as long as everybody has the information, what I'd like to do is, I think since our last meeting, some other things have taken place. So we'll ask the applicant to just update us on any of the changes that have happened, and then we can get into any discussions we need to have.
Since the last meeting, we did submit revised plans that reflected comments from the last meeting and comments from the TRC meeting. In addition, we submitted a landscaping plan that was not previously submitted. It may or may not be easy enough to see, but the... One of the comments that came out of the hearing last time was the discussion around... Sure. Where can you see it?
That's a hard combo.
Probably turned them, I'm sure. So, the request...
Yeah, why don't you put, can you put it down, put it on the other side, so... There we go.
The public can't see it.
They can't see that now?
We don't have very good setup. Maybe he could back the podium against the wall.
Yeah.
We can't put it up on the board, can you?
Yeah, well, now, put it over where you had it, Matt, that's fine, that's...
That's better.
Yeah, if you put it over here, I think that would work. Maybe.
That's much better.
That's why I need Jeff Clifford here. Jeff Clifford, our civil engineer for Altus Engineering, is not available tonight.
It's okay, a little crooked's fine.
It's fine, great. So, the...
I don't want to admit to that, please.
All right, let's start again.
Starting again. We had a, some discussion and public comment regarding the parking adjacent to the library. Recall, one of our access points for the retail shops is off of Main Street through the town lot here, adjacent to the library. And we've reversed the plan back to its original condition. We are now showing head and parking just as it is today. So there's no changes to the parking count or parking configuration there, adjacent to the library. At the suggestion of the TRC and our engineer's suggestion, we are going to replace what is today a painted island here with a raised granite curb island. That's for one, for safety, to slow down traffic as it comes from the rear of the site to Main Street, as well as to help direct some stormwater. Other than that, some comments we had, discussions on the rain garden and some details here at the back of the site. There along Spring Street, the drainage and snow stor-, drainage, stormwater here off of the back onto Spring Street. Some refinements to that design and some creation of a larger storage area there at the corner. Other than that, we don't have any other things to present in terms of changes.
A new patio area?
The patio area is, as it was shown last time here, to the, what is that, the southwest of the building.
Okay, thank you. Why Matt's at the podium? Do any board members have any questions for Matt?
Roll tip to the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, Dom, there's a notation on... C... It's regarding the removal of the riprap. And a notation, I'm on C3. 3-7, line drill and remove ledge to the particular slope. Install retaining wall if ledge is not stable or present. So, there's no proposal to actually do a retaining wall against the ledge slope to the Polish Club boundary?
The existing slope is stabilized with the riprap that's there.
And that's coming out, correct?
And we're cutting into it, we're not removing all of it. So until we actually put shovel to stone, we won't necessarily know what's behind it. So if it's ledge, then we won't need to do anything. If it's not ledge, then we'll have to secure it so the slope's stable, either with riprap or with a retaining wall, is that suggesting?
So is that something the engineer looks at during the site development process, the town engineer?
They should be.
They will look at that during the construction process? Is that what you're asking?
Right.
Yes. Yes.
I mean, relative to the integrity of the adjacent, you know, parking for the Polish Club?
When they line drill that, my understanding is that, once that's done and excavated out, Underwood and whatever else in the town will do an inspection and say, yeah, that's stable ledge face, you don't need to do a wall, or there's no ledge there, you need to do a wall, or whatever.
And so, just so I'm understanding, that the visual of that is, well, as the slope is coming out, the visual of that is going to be more of a vertical ledge slope?
It won't be ver- yeah. It'll be, it'll be a one to one and a half or something slope. It'll be almost a vertical slope, but not quite. They usually batter those a little bit, yes.
If it's, if it's made into a retaining wall?
If it's ledge.
If ledge. We're going to see exposed ledge, that's what will be behind there, I think that's...
Yes, yes, yep.
And my only other question was the fencing that's proposed. That's the, it's listed as the front elevation. Is it actually the same on both front and rear?
There's the fencing along this property line here?
Mm-hmm. Is it the type of fencing that's the same on both sides?
It's... You mean a good neighbor fence?
A good neighbor fence, thank you.
That's not what's presented. We're showing it as, so that the attractive side is on the butters property, I believe.
Do you remember what that was? I don't remember what that was.
I think it's the same detail as the enclosure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just shows the front elevation.
Can we get some additional details on the fencing?
Sure.
And yet, I'm just asking relative to those two items from a visual perspective.
Right. Okay, thank you, Val. Does anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Dan.
This relates to L2 and the snow storage. Will there be an area there, if you take into account from some of the shrubbery that you're putting there, plus the guide wires, or to actually store snow, yeah?
There's limited area. If we need to, we'll have to do what we're doing now, striking some of that off.
But in your calculations, that's considered snow storage?
It's a snow storage. It's designated for snow storage, right?
Anything else, Dan?
No.
Jane? Janice? I have nothing. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak? Come on up, do you have to come up to the podium, please?
Joan Di Maria, one of the library trustees, and I didn't have a chance to look at the plans before coming here tonight, but I was told by Sharon Kidney that things had been changed and it looks very good from what I could look at the, at the drawings there. The only thing else that I would ask is if there was any way that a speed bump or some kind of thing to slow traffic down as people come in off 108. Because I almost had some, somebody clipped me on Monday night. It was a tow truck coming in and they, they had a car on the bed already and he just didn't pay any attention to somebody actually being in there. And he was going pretty fast.
That's a valid question. Could we just ask Mr. Chinberg to have Altus look at that and see if there was a spot appropriate to put some sort of speed reduction? You can't put it too close to the, we actually come in on 108 because then cars will stop on 108 and cause a rear-end accident.
Well, I mean, like, like maybe just past the crosswalk area or something like that.
Yeah, we'll have them look at, see if there's some place there that's reasonable to do something to slow them down. Speed bumps usually aren't used anymore because of plowing and whatnot, but they may be able to do something.
But something that would sort of get somebody's attention.
Yep.
Other than that, I would have to say that you did a nice job keeping it the way it should be.
Sure, I'm glad to hear that you, you guys are happy.
Thank you for listening to us.
We get paid to do that. Oh, do we get paid? Go ahead, Dan.
Just a question out to the labor pocket, about what is going to be the total number of surplus property?
We have 22 spaces in surplus.
Okay, 22 out of...
There's a table that was submitted.
I've provided a copy for the board members with the plan.
So it's 22, then?
Thank you again.
Sure, okay.
Thank you for your input.
We have another member to talk to.
Okay, come on up, sir. Please give us your name and rank and serial number.
I'm Mark McKinsey. I'm at 6 Washington Street. And I apologize for missing the last meeting. I was out of town. So just today, I had a chance to look at these, at the plans in any detail. And what strikes me is that it's, this is very, as you can see here, it's very oriented towards the mill buildings. I'm, I'm coming in as a member of the neighborhood, right over here on 1 Washington Street. And I can actually see over here from my, from my deck. So, this, as I say, this is what strikes me about it, is it's very oriented this way. And I'm looking at, I'd like to look at it a little bit today from, I'll speak as, as the only representative here. I'll speak as someone from the neighborhood. First of all, and I did bring this up at an earlier meeting, at a preliminary meeting, according to the new, if I'm, I hope you'll correct me if I'm mistaken, according to the new M2 zoning plans for this area, this is not in compliance with the, with the, with the, what would you call it?
The requirement that it doesn't be oriented to the street.
Assuming it's a requirement that it face onto the street that the property borders on and that it not be set back too far from that street. The idea being to keep parking from intervening between the street life of the neighborhood and the building itself. So that's one thing that I've noticed that I did mention before and, and it doesn't seem to have been addressed here. I understand the issues with the need for having trucks come in. But it does emphasize the fact that in some ways, the building is turning its back on the neighborhood. And that's my concern in talking about it. Again, I also want to remind you that this was, I don't know if it is in the current form, but it was part of the historic district that we had, briefly at least. And, and that should make us think about how this harmonizes with the neighborhood. And I just had a visual, I had a glimpse of the exterior of the building. And, you know, I guess that is my question. I mean, how do you see this in being, you know, the mill buildings certainly are integrated in the, in the community. I'm wondering how you see the...
Excuse me, sir. Sir, you have to address us, please. You don't, don't just yap, please.
I'm curious how, how the designers and the builders can see this as, as harmonizing with the neighborhood. I do have a specific question.
Okay.
What material the building as designed now is using? You know, as I look at the neighborhood, we have, you know, either, you know, these peaked clabbered houses or some imitation thereof, or brick. I mean, certainly the mill buildings and the library are both brick. When you think of the flat roof that I saw in the design, that would suggest the library and as well as the, as well as the mill buildings. What I saw really doesn't seem to have any connection with its surroundings, and that was a concern for me. So that's, you know, one point. There's a second point, maybe, I would like to make. And then, the other point, which I think as someone in the neighborhood is important and I think should be important to our community as something that we conceive of as a Main Street community, is the fact that it's, it's very, what? It's not pedestrian-friendly. But, you know, this, the notion of being able to walk to a place is very much connected with the idea of, of the local and are being connected as, as residents of the area here, of the downtown area, immediately with, with the businesses that are nearby. So as you see here, I mean, if you look, you know, if you look on the other side, and you look at the library, you look at the Riverdale Restaurant, those have immediate access to Main Street. As you look at this here, you can see that it's essentially an island surrounded by parking or entry-exit ways. And as far as Main Street goes, you know, it would have, you would, there's no walkway from here, even if one were to come up Central Street and along Spring Street here, as well as passing through these entrances, you have to then walk around to the front of the building in order to enter it. And, let's see, I don't, let's see, let me just look here and see if there's anything I want to add to that. So, you know, I guess my question is how, I don't, I have no idea how many businesses are thinking of moving in there. But when I look at this, it makes me think of a strip mall, something that is oriented towards traffic, cars, you know, with emphasis on parking. So I don't know how many businesses they are thinking of moving in. That would be something I would be interested in hearing as well. And I, you know, just in terms of kind of the, the neighborhood, I should point out that on this corner here is the bus stop for the public schools. So every morning and every afternoon, we have a bus coming this way, dropping off students on this side of the street rather than the other side of the street here. So this area is, is, has a thick cluster of very active kids during those times of day.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can we say bus stop? Are we talking yellow bus, or are we talking...
Yellow bus, yellow bus, yeah, yeah. No, you want any special stops just on either side? And, you know, even as it is, you know, it's, considering how quickly cars come down the, come down from the hill there on Elm Street, it's a concern. So this is something that I would just like to remind you of. I'm not sure that you're aware of it. So, you know, the addition of these trucks here coming in, and I don't know what times of day that might be, but that would be something to consider. You know, they're, currently, I should say, and I don't know how this new configuration will alter that, but currently, they are down here on the street and they're also playing around up here on top of the wall there, the retaining wall. So, you know, that's, I guess that's it. I just feel like the neighborhood really is being ignored in this plan. And as a member of the neighborhood, that's a concern to me.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll try to get to some answers here. As far as, I'm sorry, you have a question for him?
Yeah.
Oh, come on up, I'm sorry, come back up to the...
Just asking, from your perspective, because the lot, maybe I'm wrong, but I think is actually facing Spring Street. Is that correct?
I was going to say, we have some renderings here, and I don't know if you brought your presentation showing the rear rendering, but I think that it would help, be helpful to the planning board and to the member of the public who's here to see those renderings so that you have an idea of what the visual impact will be.
Can I also just finish my question?
Sure.
Thank you. All right. From my perspective, excuse me, sir, I'm sorry. I hadn't had a chance to finish my question to you.
Okay.
Okay. I'm trying to address your central question in terms of the building face, being part of the neighborhood. And I'm just thinking, in terms of the lot 61 and 60, they actually border on Spring Street.
Correct.
But, so the building is actually closer to Spring Street. So it's, in some senses, it's not really set back. It's, is part of more of that complete streets idea that you wanted in terms of the building being closer to the street because of the lots they're on. So that's one thing, I think, to consider, is that in fact, it does approach the street.
I think that's the, my concern.
I thought that's what you wanted.
I would like it, yeah, I mean, I like, I would like it, if it's close to Spring Street, I would like it to be oriented towards Spring Street as a building. Currently, as they have it designed, this, you know, I don't know what they'll have in terms of a loading dock, but it'll essentially be the back of the building.
Okay, well, I guess, and maybe then we can answer that question with that. But I just wanted to bring that point up, that it's actually on the lots that face Spring Street.
Right, to go through, all right, there's the...
Spring Street.
Rendering of the back of the building.
So it's pretty, and...
Which I think looks pretty good.
We actually did hear some comments from other neighbors earlier on, and we worked to add architectural relief and detail to what is typical, to the rear of the building. And if you look at most retail areas, the rear is just concrete block and loading docks. We removed the loading docks, we moved the dumpsters away from the building, we added these awnings and a crosswalk that goes over, and actually an entrance into the building from the Spring Street side. So, the, we did make a good effort to, to make it more welcoming to that street.
Hold on, sir, so the people at home can hear, you need to come up to the microphone. And please ask questions here, and then we'll ask them to them, so everybody at home can hear.
Now, if there are multiple businesses in there, I guess my question would be, how does this door here relate to whatever businesses are, that are in there?
Okay, thank you, Will.
Multiple businesses, but one door, what's, you know, how do those things?
Well, it's difficult to answer that with any total promise. However, the concept was that this south end of the building would be roughly five-eighths, the two-thirds of the building would be a small grocery. This would be two or three smaller users. So we put the door off-center here so that it could go into a little lobby and access a hallway and possibly access some or all of the units inside. That configuration cannot be totally determined yet, but that's the hope in setting up our entrance here, that it may work to provide access into the building for some or all of the shops.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman?
Go ahead, Val.
Just to clarify, so when we're looking at the site plan, we are seeing an actual sidewalk that comes through a crosswalk and then around the building, which is also being depicted on the, on the elevation plan? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Jane?
So, just one question, you had mentioned that you had moved the dumpsters?
Where?
Where'd they go, Matt? Oh, we just moved them, they were kind of, there was a loading dock and some clumpy stuff down here, so we moved them slightly away, added some parking and got rid of the loading dock. So the dumpsters didn't go far from the building, but they are falling down at the very end.
So if I'm looking at that picture, could you show me where they would be?
Like in, you'd be seeing them right here.
Okay.
They're all set, Jane?
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions? I personally am very happy with what this looks like. It's a huge improvement on what you started with. I know you added some detailing to the back and a lot of shrubbery and everything. I think you've done everything the, the board has asked you, so... Hold on, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thanks. This is just to potentially help with passage with neighbors on the other side of the street to bring up this gentleman's also concerns about connecting with the neighborhood. I don't know, I think it's natural that the houses that are right across the street are going to...
the street are going to want to come to this store. So I was just wondering if there's any place where an additional crosswalk for those houses might be placed, across on the other side of Spring Street. Because I'm, my concern is that people just sort of run across the street to get to the store, because it's a natural magnet. And I don't know if there are any, I was just asking.
Yeah. Let me just try to answer that, I think. I don't think there's a sidewalk on the other side of Spring Street. You can't put a crosswalk into an area where there's no sidewalk.
Okay, all right.
Because of ADA requirements and things like that.
Okay, so then I just want to look again at...
It's a good idea, but there's no sidewalk over there too.
So, because people, at this intersection of all these streets here, people would have to cross Elm, where's the closest crosswalk on Elm Street, other than the, on the, what's the closest far crosswalk?
Right here.
I know, I understand far, far, from the far side of the intersection on Elm Street. So I'm just trying to figure out how people further up on Elm Street could approach...
They'll cross Nichols Ave, and then they'll cut across where the bus stop is. They'll hop around the corner.
There is no crosswalk further up on Elm Street.
There isn't?
Until you get...
That's my question.
I'm not sure there is one all the way down.
No.
Till you get to...
Well, maybe across from...
From L&amp;M.
L&amp;M.
Right, yeah.
So they would, and there's a crosswalk at L&amp;M?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't...
I believe there is.
Well, that's, I guess...
Probably worn away, but...
Hmm, yeah.
In addition to that...
There's a lot of crossing that goes down there.
Right.
Yeah.
Wouldn't want to bring people from Spring Street over into here anyway, because there's no access to the building. So it made more sense to bring them in down here, where they could possibly either enter this entrance, if it exists, into units, or come around to the front.
Sure, yeah. I understand your crosswalk in the parking lot, that's great. I'm just thinking of connecting with the people on the far side of that intersection. But I guess they would have to go down L&amp;M, and then they come across the street here, and then they go across Elm. And it's not ideal for their access, but I just was hoping to make things as safe as possible for neighborhood kids who want to come into the store.
I promised last question, if I may.
Sure.
So we talked about moving the dumpsters, we talked about taking the loading dock away. The deliveries are still going to happen in that area, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, back in this area.
Yep, thank you.
And just, I guess for the record too, I know, I'll ask Dan this, because I didn't see the last council meeting, but the council, as I know, it hasn't approved the M2 district yet, hasn't voted on it, approved up or down yet, is that correct?
That's correct. The last meeting, it was a workshop, and there was a motion brought to bring it forward to vote on it, and it was three to three tied, so it was tabled.
Oh, you only had six members?
Six members. So we're having a town council tomorrow, so we'll see what happens.
So there's a meeting tomorrow, is that on the agenda to...
I believe it, it's, well, no, it's...
Be discussed?
It's tabled.
Oh, okay.
So it has to be brought off the table.
Yeah, okay.
Recognizing that, from our perspective, we decided to shift the building and have it meet the current zoning. And if in the future that zone changes, and we haven't developed the site yet, we may seek an amendment to the plan, but currently this fits the existing zoning.
Well, and we have the right, if the M2 passes, we had the right to waive that requirement, right, so.
He has a waiver request.
Yeah, okay.
Before that effect.
Okay. Do any other board members have any questions or issues or concerns?
Close the microphone.
No? Come on up.
Yeah, I will just repeat that, just in terms of, you know, integration with the neighborhood, I am curious to find out what the building is actually, the plan is for building, I mean, for building materials, for the exterior of the building.
I believe it's brick and metal?
Well, we're, what we're assuming is it would be, there's a brick treatment down low, some type of masonry treatment, and this would be either a standing seam metal sort of treatment, or some composite material. And I believe we have the front, obviously on this, on the other view, there's lots of glass. So these roofs are depicted as standing seam metal, not exactly sure what we would use for this vertical type of siding, but it would be something that would look similar to this.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, clarify, it's not concrete block, correct?
Correct.
Well, something like this could be a type of concrete block. This is depicted as a brick-type material.
Or with a brick facade.
It'd be a textured, like our retaining walls that we've done with some good success.
Foundation block.
Go ahead, one last question.
Oh, well, it's not really a question, I will just say, you know, I said that this was designed with cars in mind. Well, that's certainly not true about the front, the front actually looks pretty nice. As someone, you know, again, concerned from the Spring Street orientation here, if that's metal, I mean, it looks a bit like, it will look a bit like a garage, you know, like my garage up there on, a little further up 108, which is the, this kind of metal on it. So that would be a real concern for me. And I also was a little worried when, I think I heard Mr. Chernberg say, you know, if we put a door here, you know, that seems to depend on what kind of businesses move in there. So, again, you know, if he's saying, well, you know, we've made these adjustments, but then those adjustments don't, you know, aren't realized, I guess my question would be, you have very nice glass facade on the front of the building, and I know it's surely more expensive than putting in this kind of siding, but I would ask, you know, if, in order to make it truly part of the neighborhood, if it would be possible to put in glass on this site as well, and add to that, at least up to the point where the trucks will be coming in.
How does glass make that more part of the neighborhood?
Oh, because it doesn't look like the back of the building so much, which this does.
There's no glass buildings in the neighborhood now.
I'm talking about the glass windows, the panes that they have in front, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chernberg, there's one question there for you to answer, yes?
I just wanted to reassure the gentleman that this door is going to go in there, and it'll either go, it'll definitely at least go into one unit. What I don't know is the circulation, whether it could possibly serve as others. If it's a single-tenant building, then it would just go into one unit. So we will put the door there in that fashion.
Sure, you may.
Thank you. Zun Kudonwood, 351 Wadley Falls Road. I have a, I don't know if this is part of the review just yet, but just wondering about the signage to indicate how to get into the, into the building and alert people to the businesses in the building and, you know, from Main Street, Elm Street, and Spring Street.
Thank you. Matt, will you please walk through that?
It's depicted on these two sheets. So from Main Street, there's a location here, so toward yourself, Riverdale Garage, the library, Main Street. There's a spot here for a sign that would provide directional arrows to the retail center as well as to the municipal parking that is in the rear of the library. On the Spring Street side, we are proposing a sign here at the driveway.
Thank you. Excuse me, any further questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and ask the planning board, we have a memo from Diane Hardy, the planner, ask the board what their preferences, I will certainly entertain, starting with the waivers, motions to discuss and approve or disapprove waivers as we go through this. Does everybody find their copy of the memo?
Yonah, do you want to attend?
I think we should do one at a time, yes. Do you want to make a motion, Val?
I make a motion with regards to the New Market Mills LLC, application of major site plan, site plan at Main Street, tax map U2, lot 1661, the B1 zone, to waive the requirements of Section 4.110B soils mapping checklist.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? I think we've talked about this in previous packages, where this is something that is typically required for residential subdivision, what the soils are there now are really immaterial. So I support the waiver. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, first waiver passes. Val, you want to continue on?
I'll make the motion, then I'd like some discussion.
Sure.
Make a motion to waive Section 3.02A in parking for number of spaces.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, discussion, Val?
So as I look at the park analysis summary table, maybe Diane can help me through this, we're looking at an existing excess surplus of 64, which are including the shared parking in front of the mills, so, or the public parking in front of the mills. And then with the additional supply, that brings the total up to 285, which is, and I understand the math here, the supply less demand leaving us with 22. So even if we were not utilizing, if the applicant was not utilizing the 12 public spaces, we would, they would still have an excess of 10 on-site, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, so why are we looking at the specific waiver in this regard?
Because this is currently, we, when we started off with this, we had made a determination that we wanted to review it under both the B1 zoning, which is the existing, and the M2.
Okay.
And the B1 zoning parking is determined a little bit differently, and it's based on a prescribed standard.
So under the B1 zoning, which is the current, which I believe is what the motion is to waive, Section 3.02A under B1, utilizing the same analysis, are we at a different number on the surplus? Or, let me put it a different way, are we at a lesser number than 10?
The difference between the M1, excuse me, and the B1 and the M2, is that it recognizes the opportunity for shared parking.
Okay.
And if you see in the demand analysis, is a 20% reduction, and that was documented as part of Steve Purnell's, your traffic engineer's memo.
Okay.
So basically, it would be, it wouldn't consider the 20% reduction.
Okay.
It would be an excessive.
So in fact, we, we really wouldn't need to waive this, because if we were not doing the reduction, and if we elected, although I know the applicant can, elected not to include the Main Street public spaces, we, it would be a net zero. Okay. So I just wanted to understand that. In either case, we, there could be the issue of not having to waive it, because there'd be a net reduction of zero.
And I think we're trying to cover all bases, because we don't know what the outcome of the rezoning will be.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, any other discussion, questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And I apologize if these discussions were held at the last meeting that I had to miss.
You want to continue on, Val?
We'll make a motion, again, with regards to the application, as previously stated, make a motion to waive Section 3.02B1A2, the stall size, relative to waiving the required size to accommodate 25-foot wide travel aisles.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion? I think to be clear, that is reducing the depth of the parking spot from 20 feet to 18 feet, to have a 25-foot wide aisle.
Right. Are there other spaces that could accommodate 20 feet in the parking area, anywhere in the, I guess Lot 68 there are...
I don't believe this is all of them, this is a specific...
This is just the handicap accessibility.
Right, right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion passes. Val, you're doing a great job, keep rolling.
Make a motion that we waive Section 3.02B4, requiring that the curbing in the B1 zone be concrete, and to be able to allow the applicant to match the existing style and design of the curbing that is currently on-site with the use of vertical granite at the driveway entrances and the Cape Converbs at the interior islands.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion passes. Number five, Val.
A motion that we waive Section 3.02, site plan regulations regarding parking locations, to grant the applicant the ability to park within the setback along the southerly property line, which will allow for more efficient utilization of existing space based upon the grade of the lot, and that the existing visual buffer along Spring Street will provide a visual buffer to employee parking.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Val. All right, the second page of that memo is a list of recommendations from Ms. Hardy in regard to if we vote to approve this application tonight. So before we go through the recommendations...
Just one more waiver.
I'm sorry?
There's one more waiver request that wasn't included.
Okay.
And I just, if you look at the memo, and I've given you a copy of the memo that was provided by New Market Mills, the waiver requests dated July 1st.
Oh, diminution of hydroric soils?
No, we've done that. It's actually on the top of page two, on-site parking. And this is related to the proposed rezoning proposal for the M2. It does not apply for the B1 district, but it would apply if the new M2 district zoning comes into play. And what we're talking about is no on-site parking shall be allowed between the front of the primary structure and the street. And this is, relates to five parking spaces along Spring Street. Could you point out on the map, Matt, where those five parking spaces are, please?
Those spaces would be three here and two here, near Spring Street.
So those, if in fact that back of the building becomes the front of the building, okay, then technically it would require a waiver. And again, the applicant's trying to cover all bases based on either, you know, the zoning scenario, passing.
This is the mixed use.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Val, do you want to tackle motion on that one?
Yes, I will make a motion to waive Section 3.22C5, on-site parking, relative to not allowing parking between the front of the primary structure and the street.
Is there a second?
Second. Quick discussion on that?
Yep, motion's made and seconded, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, so basically, you're going to be eliminating five parking spaces?
No.
No. No, we're allowing them to stay there.
Oh, that's fine with us, stay there, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other questions, discussion, comments?
Well, I think that also addresses what's the, what street does it front, because it's also going to waive it from, if someone took the position, Elm Street is the front, and you have parking, which is the old town law.
Can I ask you a simple question? Just, isn't the street that the lot is adjacent to the street that it fronts?
No, this, this, this street, this lot really has frontage on Spring Street and Elm Street.
Okay, yeah, okay, but, because it's, well, 68 is Elm, and, okay, but would you argue that the majority, though, of the property...
That doesn't determine what had, what, the frontages.
Okay, I don't, I don't know, I'm just asking.
It just runs on two streets.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some towns allow the owner to determine which street they have their frontage on if they have a corner lot. It's different in every town.
Well, I guess the question is if they've merged and then re, had been reincorporated, is the lot renamed, or is it going to stay Lot 61 and 68? It's not going to become 61... It's not going to become 61 dash A?
They will be merged as one lot.
We need to do a consolidation.
And, yes, the, there will be a plan done which eliminates those lot lines, makes it one lot.
Okay. So then it is a corner lot, that's.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
That's my point.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, that motion passes. Onward to recommendation. I will entertain a motion if anybody is willing to make it for a vote on this tonight. I think we need to make a motion, and then we'll, if we get a second, then we'll go through the recommendations one by one, if anybody so desires.
Yeah, there is a question that I, I have moved Elizabeth and Mr. McKenzie. There's a lot of traffic, foot traffic, on Spring Street and Elm Street. And I don't know if there's any type of way or signage that could be done with, that could slow down the traffic a little, because I walk that road a lot. And the comment about school buses with children being dropped off, that's a big concern with the little kids there. They don't, they're not, well, some of them are brighter than adults with traffic. But it is a concern that shouldn't, shouldn't just be brushed aside, it should be somehow thought what could be the engineers and maybe school personnel, wait, something there that should be, maybe on those flashing signs that they have in front of the mill with the lights, just to warn the people coming, that, that, something, I mean, I know the chief of police has looked, you know, sat in on any of these meetings, and the traffic.
The town, the town has a safety committee.
Right, they looked at it.
Traffic committee that could.
They haven't looked at it.
They should, because that is a really serious issue.
Yeah, I will admit the flashing light, when I come down the road, that really does catch my, all the other traffic.
I mean, I don't disagree with you, Janice, I think that's something that, you know, our concern should be passed on to the town administrator, and let the safety, the traffic committee look at that and see if there's something that can be done, because that's certainly an existing problem.
So you're putting, putting the burden of doing something about it with the town?
Yeah, it's the town's responsibility.
Which I think makes sense.
Right. And I know, you know, flashing lights, people like flashing lights.
I don't know.
People love them, except for the people over right next to them, and it flashes in their window all day, every day, all night, every night.
Well, sure, so something, yeah, maybe, so I think, I think, thank you, Janice, I think that's a good idea. But again, that's, I don't, I don't have as strong a feeling about if, if it, will it still remain important if we're putting it in front of the town and not in front of the proposed developer?
Well, I personally don't think it's a developer's responsibility, because it's an existing condition. That's, that's my opinion.
I think, as I understand Janice's comment is, are we looking to have the developer do an offsite improvement as a condition of the plan approval?
As he is bringing in more traffic into that area. The town's not bringing in more traffic into the area. The developer is, and I'm not against the plan, but I just think something should be done, and maybe incorporate on the developer's side, instead of the town's side.
What was the additional car count?
Oh, boy, I don't have Pernod's.
I have. Do we have Pernod's memo?
I'm not sure how this works, but shouldn't the safety commission look at this?
They don't look at planning board plans.
At all?
But if there's a, if there is a concern about a particular intersection, then you bring it to the town administrator, it will be put on the agenda, and it finds its way eventually to the town council with the recommendation.
And my comment would be, what did the town engineer and the TRCs, what was their position relative to the traffic?
And we do, we do have a traffic report, and if you can bear with me, I will locate it.
And particularly for.
But that was all reviewed as part of the TRC.
But I don't think the other planning board members have seen that.
It was reviewed by the TRC.
But I mean, the committee, the members of the board outside of the TRC, I don't think have seen that report.
Okay. We can make that report available.
Didn't everybody get the traffic? It was a memo.
I thought it was, this was way back when, it was done including the Riverdale property as well as the, the other property, and it was the back property, and it would have been maybe February or March.
So that, that would be, my question is.
Would you like me to get the report? I can get that.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to figure out a way to, with, just discuss with everyone, I think we all have an interest in trying to facilitate things moving forward, but we also have some lingering concern over the people crossing the street. So I don't know, to suggest some ways to, what do you think, Eric, or some, maybe, I think potentially it could just be an additional crosswalk mid-block or something like that, if there, you know, the proper sightlines or something are available to do that, I don't know if they are.
Have we asked the chief of police?
Well, my opinion is that, that everything we're talking about may be valid, it's not this developer's responsibility to correct an existing problem. The fact that there's more cars going there doesn't necessarily make it unsafe, it just means there's more cars going there. It's an existing situation that I think everybody in town is well aware of.
But, but just for purpose of discussion, it is our responsibility on this board and under our regulations, that if, if the traffic impact study shows an increase to some level of, of traffic in a particular area, I think if there's a problem there, and that was really my question, did the TRC look at that to say that the increase relative to the traffic study does not indicate that this proposed use of the property in development is going to cause an increased safety issue in that particular location?
That's, I mean, certainly that's my opinion of what the TRC did. I mean, the chief of police sat in at the meeting, Rick Malaski sat in the meeting, nobody ever.
Did that include the town administrator?
Town administrator sat in.
In.
Myself, Underwood, it was never, it was never said that this level of traffic is going to make crossing the street unsafe. You know what I mean, it's, the majority of the traffic is coming in.
They don't live on the street, I mean.
No, I understand.
I, I, I lived on that street for many years, growing up. I know the traffic, how it has increased since when I was a kid, up until the age now, because my brother lives up on that street. And that street is going to be impacted by this developer's site. I'm not against the developer, I'm going to approve the plan, but I do think it's the developer's responsibility for providing something. Now, I'm the only one who may feel that way, but I don't think after the fact, you come back and say, oh geez, a $100 light would have helped.
Well, I'm not sure it's warranted or not, I mean, depending on the TRC results, and if I miss the results, I.
I think there's a big difference if you actually lived on that street, then some people would just sit back and, I don't know, I'm not going to say anymore.
No, I, I don't disagree with you, Janice.
I know you don't.
But I, I think it's an issue that is on that street today, whether this development was ever there, if there's an issue there, people going up over the hill.
But he's bringing it in, that's the point.
Yeah, but that doesn't, but, but more doesn't mean necessarily it's unsafe. And, I mean, what you're talking about is something that is a, to me, is a town problem. I don't know if there is anything that can be done, there's crosswalks out there now.
Well, there are, there are ways to manage intersections to make them safer for crossing. You can, you can, you can make the crossing distance smaller, you, you know, you can choke the road a little, you can create.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Patterns in the pavement and, and things like that, just, I mean, we have a tabled walk on Main Street, it doesn't have to be a tabled walk, but there could be some sort of painted intersection marking in that intersection.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but, I mean, I'll, I'll go back to the same old thing, is that, to me, it's an existing thing that maybe the town should look at addressing. And it's not just that intersection, there's a lot of areas where people have complained about.
I think Val has a better grasp than I do of responsibilities in terms of changes brought about by development.
My, my point of the, of the, of the discussion was, was that, number one, the applicant would have submitted a traffic study, and would have shown the increase within these intersections of the, of the traffic, and did, what was the TRC's position on it, was my question.
Except, we have a report that was prepared by Steve Pernod, who is the traffic engineer. If you recall, the planning board did not require a full-fledged traffic analysis, that was at the very first meeting. We are trying to locate the report right now, but they figured out the, the, the split in the traffic, I think it was a 25, 75% split, and there were some traffic volumes calculated, and it was not significant enough to warrant any kind of a signalized intersection or major improvements or offsite improvements.
So I'm just, just.
And I'm, I'm looking for the report, I don't have it with us.
Okay, okay, and I'm, and I'm just thinking that, I mean, I'm not saying we have to have some, a light or so-and-so, but there may be some intersection improvements that can be made that are less expensive and less dramatic, if warranted, but if they're not warranted by the tech.
We're warranted by the, by the traffic engineer.
Okay, then if, okay, then if the traffic engineer, then I am willing to say that I would not advocate that that be a condition of, of the, my vote for the approval, but I think it is something to bring up to, to the safety committee, but I assume that, I don't know, town, you know how the town operates better than I do, Diane, so I don't know if the TRC committee reports go to the safety committee, or how.
No, the safety committee only go, only gets together when they have, somebody has written a letter, or some other person has indicated a complaint that says, I have an issue, now they will go look at it.
But to clarify this, okay, the TRC and the, and the town engineer reviewed the traffic impact analysis.
The traffic memo.
And, in, in their opinion, any additional increase in that particular entrance location did not require further mitigation of the crosswalks or the traffic flow.
And also, I want to mention that the entrance onto Route 108 is subject to a highway safety, highway access permit from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. And that's one of the conditions, that that be issued prior to any construction of the proposed building. That's one of the conditions before the plan is, is approved and signed.
Diane, I'll stop you for my own edification, when you talk about the difference of an actual traffic study versus, I think the terminology used was memo, are we talking about different methodologies?
A more in-depth study and different methodologies. And I do have a copy of it, I would have to go to my computer, turn it on, and print it out for you, but I could likely locate if you'd like to review it. I'd like to just say that, you know, the TRC did consider this, and we worked, you know, in good faith with the applicant all the way through the process, and I personally think it's kind of unfair to, you know, raise these issues at the 11th hour when we had, when we had six months to review.
For those of us who are not, for those of us who are not on the technical review committee, I think we have a right to ask, so.
I have no problem with people asking questions, I think, I have no problem vetting all this.
It's just that we don't have all the documentation for the planning board that the TRC had, but we can make that available if you'd like to review it.
Well, I, I trust if it was adequately looked at by the TRC, that no huge safety measures are needed, and then I, I would vote pass as presented.
To, to this gentleman's comment earlier, though, is that, you know, where, everything in this country is based around cars. When you do a traffic study, any kind of traffic study, there's never a pedestrian component of that. You look at vehicles, you don't look at pedestrians walking and crossing and.
That's not part of the, what was done under the TRC.
It's never part of any traffic study. You look at where the cars are coming from, and where they're going, and, and whatnot, and the number of them, no, there's never a pedestrian component of that.
So is it vehicular traffic?
Right. Well, and that's our regulation, okay.
Exactly. So, and again, I'm, I'm just curious, because I could have sworn, and, and help me with this, that we've now discussed that it's a school bus, but isn't there also, I call it the UNH bus?
The coast bus, yes.
Right, so there, so there's both of them there.
Yes.
When they did the traffic's analysis or memo, do you, do we know if those two elements were thought of at all?
That wasn't part of the school.
That weren't part of the study.
There wasn't a part about the. That it was just cars, I get that.
Yes.
But I, I'm just curious, if we had a full study done, would that have been looked at?
No.
That's my, that's my question.
No, you don't look at pedestrian, you don't look at anything having to do with that, you look at vehicles.
Yeah, no, that's what, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
And just to clarify, you look at what, what the proposed use is going to increase the number of vehicles, correct?
Correct.
And that's what the memo would have stated.
And they had no, a big concern about that, okay.
Because they're saying this proposed use would increase if I X number of vehicles, and 25% of that total would be coming in off of the, the Spring Street access.
All right, well, I think it's good to go in this galleon dialectic, otherwise we never solved any of our questions.
I don't understand what you just said, but it sounded good.
[laughing].
Hey, I have no problem with discussion, Janice.
That's our job.
Exactly. And Janice, I have no issue with you.
Oh, I know you don't. Then I hope the town council will address the issue when it's needed to be addressed, because if they just look at cars, they don't get pedestrians, and you're going to have a lot of pedestrians down there. Add it. That's why they were looking at the pedestrian walkway for the mills overhead.
Well, it's a different road.
I know, but I'm just saying, let's move on. I'm done.
Y'all set?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
And I just, Elizabeth has taken some time to review the landscaping plans and had put together some comments and recommendations.
We chatted over the phone and Diane typed this up.
Do you want to review them? Yes, because those are her comments, and if you feel that they're appropriate, we could include them as condition number 10 to the list of recommendations.
Yeah, let's, let's get there, and then we can talk about them.
They're not, they're not major, they're not major elements, okay?
No, that's fine, let's just wait till, I think we need to get, if we're going to take a vote, we need to get to the point where we're going to, then we'll, we will discuss that as item 10 if we, if we get that far.
Sure.
All right, so we'll just do it in turn. All right, I will, again.
So, you're looking for a motion?
Yes.
With recommendations on conditions of approval, correct?
Yes.
One other question prior to making a motion, it's my, so is, should there be a requirement within the conditions that the lots are merged and recorded?
Yeah, that was oversight on my part. And that will be done by a deed request, and that can be approved by the chairman of the planning board at a future meeting.
Is the chair's pleasure to make a motion with all conditions stated, or to make motions on individual conditions?
I would like to make a, to have a motion to approve it and then have discussion on the recommendations, because I, for one, don't necessarily agree with all the recommendations, and again, I think we need to have some discussion on them.
Sure, and I'm not sure that my findings are such that they really merit a conditional, they're just a suggested review.
Right, understood. Does that make sense, Val? Does everybody kind of concur with that? All right, do you want to take a shot at it, Val? You seem to be the motion person tonight.
Taking that away from you there, Rick. I will make a motion that we approve the, approve the application for a major site plan submitted by New Market Mills LLC, a property located at Main Street on tax map U2, Lot 60A and 61, in the B1 zone, which is under proposed change of zoning from B1 to M2 at this time, and the proposal is to construct a single-story 9,600-square-foot commercial building near Spring Street at the western New Market Mills parking lot, for the purpose of housing various businesses, including a small grocery, restaurant, and retail shops, with the following conditions. Number one, subject to the approval of the town council and appropriate execution and recording within the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds of a permanent right-of-way easement agreement which is entered into by and between the town of New Market and the New Market Mills LLC, which grants to the New Market Mills LLC the rights of access and egress across tax map U2 parcel 60B, which is owned by the town of New Market. Condition number two, subject to approval of the proposed parking and access improvements as shown on the applicant's site plan C2A and on tax, tax map U2 parcel 60B by the town of New Market. Third condition is that impact fees for the project be calculated in accordance with the town regulations, and they shall be paid to the town of New Market prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy related to this project. The fourth condition would be that the applicant enter into a developers' agreement with the town of New Market, which includes all findings of facts, any special site plan approval conditions, the town's expectations relative to the development prior to and during construction, requirements prior to the issuance of building permits, and certificates of occupancy and scheduling. The fifth condition is evidence that all relevant, that the applicant provide evidence that all relevant state permits from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation that all relevant state permits from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation have been secured. Copies of these permits and any corresponding conditions shall be provided to the Town Planning Department prior to the signing of the site plans by the Planning, by the Planning Board Chair. Sixth condition would be that the revised site plan, Plan C2 and C2A, dated July 1st, 2013, shall be recorded at the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds as amended by these conditions. The, Condition Number Seven, final sign-off of the revised plans, which are dated July 1st, 2013, by the Public Works Director, Mick Rick Malaski, and also his Fire Chief, Underwood Engineers, and Sean Gregg, the Water and Waste, Waste Water Superintendent. The eighth condition be that the title block on Plan C2A be modified to reveal the project notes which are obscured regarding the existing parking. Condition Number Nine, the applicant work with the Public Works Department to approve upon the location, design, and visibility of signage on Main Street to better direct downtown patrons to the municipal parking, which is currently located at the rear of the New Market Library. The tenth condition be that the applicant record the required lot merger between the designated lots as shown on the, on the plan. And Condition Number Eleven, that the applicant review and consider the landscaping recommendations that are submitted by Elizabeth Dudley, and I'll date this as today's date, 7/9/2013. And I'm assuming the applicant has seen those?
They have seen them. Did your landscape architect review them?
Again, the motion was to review and consider.
Second with corrections if necessary.
Alright, motion's made and seconded. Let's start the ball rolling for discussion. I have some points, but I'll hold off. Does anybody have any discussion on any of the recommendations?
I have a discussion on the recording of the site plan. We received a memo from Bill Dussett a few weeks ago regarding issues of recording site plans at the registry. They are actually part of our, are they part of our site plan regulations? Okay, so, I'm not going to make any recommendation to, to take that off, but I think that we need to address that at some point. But to, to make the board aware.
Can you, I'm sorry.
That there are issues on recording site plans.
Issues with, by whom?
The registry.
Oh, okay.
Certain requirements that need to be met.
I know they don't like a lot of detail and this issues with information that's presented on the plans and that kind of thing.
Yeah, can you clarify that a little bit for me? I'm not sure I understand.
The Registry of Deeds has certain requirements for milars before they will, will record them. You can't have lines going through text, you can't have, you have to have certain-sized fonts, you have to have myriad of things that need to be done for them to record a milar. Sometimes with site plans, the site plans are way too busy.
Detailed.
Detailed.
So we have a, and with respect to this project, what?
Well, I think we'll leave the, we need to leave the condition because it's part of our site plan requirements and we, and we didn't waive them.
It's something that I think.
So why would we want to waive them in the future?
Because the applicant may not be able to record a site plan.
They may not be able to record the plans.
What happens is the applicant.
Oh, there are too many corrections that need to be made.
The applicant needs to go back to the engineer or surveyor who basically cleans it up and, and clarifies it, so it's a very basic, minimal plan, and then it can be recorded.
So it's a question of timing, is that what you're saying?
No, no, it's a question of being able to meet the requirements of the registry.
Oh, in terms of expense, expense of cleaning it up.
I would expect, not, not the expense of cleaning up, it's just that sometimes you can't.
You can't, they just, they will get rejected by the registry. A lot of towns are taking this out of their, out of their regulations because the applicants are getting their plans rejected by the registry, but yet it's a condition of approval. You can't.
You can't. We're approving, we're approving Plan C2.
Oh, then they would have to be re-approved, is that what you're suggesting? I understand. Okay, I didn't understand the missing point.
The registry in New Hampshire, actually, before you bring a plan there, will sit there and go through it bit by bit.
And then you would have to come back up in front of us again.
It makes it untenable to do sometimes, so.
Sure, sure, I understand.
Some towns don't even require them to be recorded, so I think that's something that New Market, we should look at in the future, whether we even require site plans to be recorded.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
Number nine, did you want to add the building inspector to work with the Public Works Department?
Sure, he actually has been involved in that.
Okay.
With other municipal signage, so certainly we can include him.
I'll start.
And one other question. I'm not a landscape architect, but I have been doing a lot of landscaping since 1974 with, with guys that transplanting trees on-site and from one piece of property to the other piece of property, plus buying one, but also just taking off from one side, piece of property on my land to another place. And I would say, I would give a more than one year, because one year is a shock trans, when you transplant a shrub, you know, and from the one lot to the other side of the same property, one year is just a shock for the tree. It's, so she's saying within one year.
Well, I, I don't think, we just, Diane, I just had a brief discussion, so this is just a.
We talked about a typical warranty on landscaping in a year.
But we were just, I was just suggesting that potentially that it's maybe difficult to, we just would want to ensure that trees are transplanted would be replaced if they don't take.
And I agree with that. But I would, but you just had one year, and I would give it more than one year, because one year is a shock put into.
Sure, but if it, but if it fails in that first year, get it out.
Usually it takes up to three years for a shrub to come back to life when you transplant them.
Sure, I guess, we're talking on the other side of the thing, but we're just saying if it's dead, replace it in the year.
Okay, if it's dead, that's different.
Okay, yeah. But give it time, I get it.
Yeah, you have to give it time.
Want amendment to the motion?
Do you want to make amendment to make that more than one year?
Well, I'm the only person who, I just want.
Well, we haven't heard anything from anybody else.
No, it's a good point, and we see it, that was a problem down at the coffee kiosk, and that became a nightmare because everything just was, you know, dead after a year.
Yeah, I mean.
Alright, so.
To me, it's an obvious thing, because if the tree dies, they're going to replace them anyway, so.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure it's covered.
I mean, if we want to say two years or three years, I.
Can I amend my own motion, or someone else has to do that?
Um, I'd rather have somebody else do it. Janice, you, you want to amend that, you want to amend that to three years, or don't you make a motion to amend the?
I'll go two years if you want.
Two years, that's fine, two years. Would you make a motion to that effect, please?
I'd like to make a motion to landscape, Article Number 10 of the recommendations.
No, 12.
Oh, it's Number 12, sorry, I missed one.
Add.
What was, never mind, okay. That we just, with respect to the crabapple trees, and that's where she really had her concern, is that, that the note should be added to the plans to require that any transplanted plants that don't survive within a two-year period be replaced with a tree, comparable sized plants.
Okay, motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so that portion has been amended, okay. I will start from the bottom and go through what, what my comments are. Number seven, which is the final sign-off on revised plans by Rick Malaski and Underwood and Sean Gregg, I don't care if they sign off on them or not. Underwood has, has been the reviewer, I don't think they necessarily need to sign off on. Everybody else has been part of the TRC, so I don't think it's a requirement, go ahead.
I just want to say that Underwood did provide us with the letter stating that all of their comments have been addressed by the applicant, and they were satisfied with the revised plans. And also, Sean Gregg, I spoke with him today, and he is, is in agreement with the sewer capacity, water capacity figures that were provided, and he's signed off on those. So at this point, we just are looking for confirmation from Rick Malaski, and he's been on vacation.
Yeah, and, and the reason I don't like this is just that if for some reason anyone decides I'm not going to sign them, then the applicant is in Never Never Land, they're in a position where.
Okay, I understand.
We usually get the sign-offs before the meeting, but we weren't able to do that for this meeting.
I know that Rick has been in all the TRC meetings and, and, I mean, he's had his say, and I just, I think it's unnecessary. The rest of you guys can.
I'm fine with eliminating it.
I'll make a motion to eliminate.
Seven.
Recommendation Number Seven.
And move all the other ones up in number.
Listen, listen, skip numbers, listen.
Alright, does anybody else have any comments on that? The motion's made and seconded.
I.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, so seven is gone. On, does anybody else have any comments? I've got a bunch of them here, so if anybody else wants to step in. No? Okay. Number three, I'm going to ask Val a question on Number Three. If we don't specifically talk about impact fees, the town doesn't have the authority to, to enforce them?
Correct, the Planning Board's the only, is the body in town that has the ability to waive impact fees or assess impact fees.
Right.
At the time of plan approval.
Right, so we have to, this is a statement we need to have in order to assess the impact fees.
That's my understanding, guys.
Right, if we don't say that, then, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'm fine with Number Three. And then Number One and Two I'll take into is one lump, some kind of thing. To me, the access off of Main Street is town property, the Planning Board has no authority to, you know, approve things on town property, so it's a given that this has to happen. So to me, it's just stating the obvious, and I just would like to not have to state the obvious in these decisions. So my thoughts are that we eliminate One and Two.
Discussion on that?
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing you say, that if, in fact, this was eliminated, we're approving a plan without having verification that the applicant has these easements in access prior to plan approval, if that was not included.
I think you need to.
And I think as a planning board, well, I think as a planning board, that we have an obligation to ensure that there is adequate access in, in egress to a site plan that we are approving.
Okay, I happen to think that they have access that the town will give them.
It's a temporary.
Well, let me ask a different thing. Is there, is, can the applicant, obviously the applicant has not given us any type of legal recorded deed, easement deed, showing that they have access. I don't think they have the ability to go to the registry and get that at this point in time.
Eric Chimburg.
I don't, I don't know.
I think he'd like to.
Can he clarify?
Can you comment on that? Yeah, go ahead.
I guess my confusion with this is based on our previous approval for the New Market Mills. The developer's agreement from that, which was signed and recorded back in June of 2010, required as a condition of the approval for the New Market Mills, that we demonstrate to the town's satisfaction that we have an easement across that property. So, it's specifically read, almost like your current condition reads, back then, that prior to you guys signing the New Market Mills milar, we will provide an easement plan which shows that New Market Mills LLC has the right to use Lot U260P, the library, for access. So that was in June of 2010. We did the easement plan, which showed an easement there, which was recorded in the registry October 27th, 2010. And then the milar, showing that we had proved to the town's satisfaction that we had that right, was recorded in November 30th, 2010. So it seems to me that, and all of our people who live across the street park there and drive on that road every day. So it seems to go back and.
That's already been met.
It's already been met.
You're saying we can go to the registry and get the easement plan and get the deed?
There's an easement plan, and it's got vague language on it.
But it's not a detailed meets and bounds description of that easement.
Right, and that's correct. So this issue came up, and we spoke to Steve, the Town Administrator, about it back in May, saying, look, we've got the rights, but let's just clean up the language. And to me, it's sort of a clerical job that we would do with the town's attorney. And to have it be something that we have to go to a whole nother deliberative body to get permission to use property that we already have permission to use is troublesome to me.
I think the town legal council would require that it be signed off on by the Town Council. That's my take.
But I know that that's a deliberative body that can vote on things, and theoretically they could say, I wasn't here then, I don't like this project, I'm denying you access.
This condition says to me that they currently don't have access, but the reality is they do.
I think that's.
There's an easement?
Yes, potentially, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what you just said, that.
Well, I mean, if we don't have access to it, then I've got a serious problem with the 112 apartments using it every day.
Just prove, I mean, just bring the document, that's it.
So, I mean, we've already started the process, we've given a draft to Steve Fornier and just said, let's have your attorney review it, but it's not like permission to use it.
I think that's more of a title issue than it is, I mean, if, in fact, there is a recorded easement deed. We've, we've approved that on a prior, we've approved it on a prior plan.
Right.
So why are we questioning access at this point?
And I guess, and also just, Town Council's role in this, is that necessary by, by our, by our rules? Is it necessary that the Town Council approve this?
Well, any easement that the town, across town property has to be approved.
By the Town Council.
But Eric is saying it's already been approved.
Sure, no, I understand, but I just wanted to clarify that if, if indeed the Town Council needed to formally approve that access, that's in our charter.
Well, yeah, the.
No, it's, and any.
Any land-related items have to be approved by the Town Council.
The DOT has made it, it's my understa, I haven't seen a copy of the DOT highway permit, but it's my understanding that that's a condition on the highway access permit from the state. And I asked Jeff Clifford for a copy, I didn't get one.
Well, the DOT just wanted us to clarify the easement, and so we said, we will, we'll work with the town to clarify, and we'll, we will record a better document. But that's different than saying, we don't have permission now and we have to go ask for it.
Right.
So if you can soften this language and say that we'll go work with the town's attorney and record a clarified document with better meets and bounds, that's different, because then the assumption is we already have the access.
Well, I was under the impression that you had the access because we had already approved it.
Right, we do.
Right.
But it's a vague, it's like a lot of these older easements, it's vague.
It could be like common law in terms of if you use it, it's yours to a certain extent. It depends on the length of years.
Well, I don't want to comment on the legality, but I can say that there is an easement that's recorded that has sort of, we dealt with this at Rivermore, there's vague language, and we just wanted to try to clean up easements and make them clearer, but we don't want to assume we don't have the right.
So is the game plan to.
Is that a condition on the approval, in other words?
Is the game plan to record a new easement plan?
Not a new easement plan, to record an easement.
What, what do we modify to this, to make subject to the proper execution of recording?
Wait, hold on a minute, okay, hold on.
Val, ask a question.
Sure.
Is the, is the next step for the applicant to record, there's two things you can record for a right, an easement deed and an easement plan, but the deed has to still go with the plan.
I would suggest that it would say, simply clarify to include meets and bounds with the easement across the library parcel.
That's my question. So that's what's, is the next step of that. It's not whether or not the applicant has the right to cross.
It's just that the.
It's to clarify.
It's to clarify.
The location of the easement.
The location of the easement.
Because there is no requirement for, there's no legal requirement for a meets and bounds description of an easement.
Right.
Most of them don't have them, as a matter of fact. In this case, I think it's good to have that because it will absolutely tie down forever where that easement is. So that was my thoughts on it, was that it's, it's something, we're asking them to do something that I, I believe they already have the right to, and it's unnecessary. Does something need to be cleaned up? It absolutely does.[1692.12]
So then we can modify that, okay.
But that's a lot different than saying, like Eric said, I think that's a lot different than saying, "You don't have any approval yet to use it."
So it's the depiction of the location of the permanent right-of-way easement?
Yes, I think so.
Location of meets and bounds in particular, that's it, right? That's all you need.
I'd like to hear Diane's point of view.
Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
I just think, I mean, the process has to happen and Mr. Chinberg is working with Steve Fornier on this. He intends to go to the town council to get that clarified and that, you know, maybe it's not even necessary for this board to get involved with it, other than to assure that, as Val stated, that the access rights are there. I don't think there's a question that the access rights are there. It just needs to be packaged in the right way. And that's what this easement document would do.
Well, let me throw this out there. Is it fair to say we, we record the, the site plans upon receiving that document?
Yeah.
You know, something like that? Does that, I mean-
But I guess one, another thing is, does it have to be subject to the approval of town council or can we just say it is recommended?
Can I throw something out?
I mean, that's, that's up to the town administrator and the legal council for the town to determine.
Go ahead, Val.
So we don't have to stipulate that in our condition is what I'm saying. We could just take that out.
Right. I agree with that, but-
That's what my point is.
Okay. If there is a condition relative to this, I just want to understand what it is we're, we're asking or making it a condition of. So I'm going to put this out there and just let me know if this is what we're, if this is what we're understanding. Is it the applicant, the condition would be if the applicant record an easement plan at Rockingham County Registry of Deeds depicting the location of meets and bounds of the permanent right-of-way easement over the town-owned land? Is that what we're-
It's not, we're not talking about a plan. We're talking about an easement document.
An easement doc, well-
And I have it drafted in-
Which is-
So are you calling an easement deed or a plan? I mean-
No, it can-
An easement deed.
A deed, okay.
It doesn't have to be a deed. It can be an exhibit. I mean, it doesn't have to be, I mean, I just-
I don't say properly recorded.
That's why you have attorneys to tell you what you need to do.
Right.
I'm going to leave it as easement, recording of an easement at the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds depicting the location of meets and bounds of the permanent right-of-way easement over the town-owned land.
Sounds good.
Sorry, it's the, depicting the meets and bounds-
Yes.
Of the permanent right-of-way location over the town-owned land.
I have a question.
I think it's issues with the questions.
So when you said it has to be cleaned up in language, correct? Will you be writing that language? Yes, we've actually provided a draft and, of that, essentially just meets and bounds. Right now, there's a plan that's recorded that has a little arrow and says, you know, "Easement area across the land."
Right.
And we just, and the semantics are important because if it, if, if your condition of this approval requires consent of the town to grant an easement, then that puts me in a bad spot.
That's a whole different thing.
It really, I think it has to either, it can only be some language that says, it's in everybody's interest to make the easement that exists more clear and that we'll work with the town to record a document that does that.
Yeah.
So the town attorney will take a look at this for five minutes.
Another question, when I looked at the deed that you did provide us, the question I have is, who maintains this? I mean, it's the town's property. Who is going to maintain this?
I think we offer to maintain it in the, in that agreement.
In the prior-
In the correspondence with Steve Fornier, I believe. I mean, we would offer to do that. It's in our interest to do so.
That was one of the things that I picked up. I didn't see any maintenance clauses. And those are the kinds of things that an attorney will work with the property owner to clarify as part of the drafting of the easement.
So you're really-
A contrary thing that it be accepted because it's already in existence.
So you're really looking for the necessary documentation? The applicant recording the necessary documentation at the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds depicting-
To clarify.
To clarify.
To clarify.
The existing easement, location, something to that effect.
And it's not just the location, but all the terms of the agreement.
Yeah.
Sure, I mean, can the easement be suddenly revoked?
And if, and if that, that could include, you know, the proposed parking that is part of this plan.
Right, it's all the same.
So maybe we can combine one and two, I think, is what Eric was suggesting.
Yeah, I think one and two get handled under-
To simplify.
Right.
Sorry to interrupt. I just remembered the term. I believe it's just an easement agreement.
Yeah, that's what I got you-
And it's not an easement deed, it's an easement agreement. You probably had that. And that's simply saying to discuss responsibilities for maintenance, temporary construction, and to clarify the existing easement.
Because that should have been done as part of the earlier process and it didn't get done.
So it's the easement agreement with regard to the permanent right-of-way?
Right. Its location, its maintenance, purpose.
Okay. Could you just say something like, say, the expression like salient details of permanent right-of-easement? And then that you're covered if you just use a word like that?
Yep.
All right. So I'm at, well, I think-
Do you want to make a motion, Val? Do you want to, do you have enough there to-
Yeah, I'll, I'll amend my original motion, number one, and number two. Had that the, that the applicant record an easement agreement with, an easement agreement with regards, at the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds, with regards to the permanent right-of-way over the town-owned land. And that's what we, and you want to put in the proposed parking and access improvements?
Yep.
Because one and two are together, correct?
One and two are together.
Okay.
Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think that should have, the language of that condition should continue to read as shown in Site Plan C2A on Tax MAP U2 Parcel 60B by the town.
Correct. All right, hearing no further discussion, are all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Say nay? All right. Does anybody else have any further comments on any other proposed recommendation? Or do they want any further conditions?
Was nine actually amended to add the building inspector? Was that formally done?
Yeah.
I don't think it was.
It was informal.
Yeah, okay.
Put that in the motion.
Do you want to make a, would you make a motion on number nine to add the building inspector formally?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion under the recommendations of number nine, if it's still number nine, but the item of the applicant work with the Public Works Department to improve upon the location design and visibility of signage on Main Street to better direct downtime patrons to the Minister of Parking Lot, to include the building inspector to that list.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. The ayes have it.
You want one final amendment?
Certainly.
I want to make a motion that we amend the motion as stated and amended thereto to also renumber all conditions of the approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. So we now have amended the recommendation and voted to approve the various recommendations, correct? So...
Do you have one?
Well, Val, your original motion-
Has been amended?
But it was, right, as amended.
So now you're going to move it forward as amended?
Right, right. So is there a second for that?
Second.
Or is there a motion for that? I'm sorry. We need a motion.
No, there was already second. We were amending the motion.
I seconded before with changes if necessary.
That's what he did.
Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right. You're right. You're right. Okay.
I know this group.
All right. So is there any further discussion? If there is none, we will take a vote on the amended motion to approve. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion passes seven to zero. And we thank the applicant. We thank the gentleman in the room for their input tonight. And I anticipate that we will be sending a request through Diane to the Traffic Safety Committee to look at the intersection for any pedestrian improvements that can be looked at, I guess is the right way of saying it.
Yeah. And thank you for, to the library trustees who-
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Yes. Thank you for everybody who participated. It was a, I think it was a good process and I think it's a good project and there were some significant changes due to input. All right, next on the agenda is new and old business. I have no new business. Does anybody have any new business they'd like to bring forth? Diane, do you have any old business?
Elizabeth, myself, and Cynthia Copeland met on June 24th, or 27th, I'm sorry. And we went through half of the comments that we received from the various people who provided comments on the landscaping regulations. And we're going to have one more meeting and hopefully wrap things up and have a recommendation for the planning board for a future planning board meeting. Do you want to add anything, Elizabeth?
No, I think it's, it's going to be a very thoroughly looked at document. Yes, document. Once it's through, I think it'll be good.
Okay.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Chairman's report.
Yeah, I don't have anything. The, as, as was discussed earlier, hopefully in the near future, the council will take a vote on the proposed zoning change.
I do have, have provided to the planning board members a copy of a memo that was provided to the town council concerning questions that have come up regarding the M2 zoning. And I've made copies of that for each of you so that you can refer to it. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention that I've made you a copy. And also, we have a copy on, of the most recent impact fee report for you. And our interim finance director has been very good about getting monthly reports out so that we can keep a handle on what the status of our impact fee account is.
So everybody should have gotten those tonight?
That's right.
So look forward to looking at those.
The next couple of weeks, when you have a chance, thumb through them. If you have any questions for Diane, you can email Diane or wait till the next meeting and we can bring up any questions anybody has in regard to any of those.
If I may, Diane, I tell you, I've been reading it. It's fabulous. I mean, it's-
Oh, good.
The amount of detail here is, is very, very rich, so thank you.
Okay, certainly.
Committee reports, is any, anybody on any committees that, I know during the summertime we usually, things are pretty slow. Any meetings?
Rick? I just want to mention, I'm a trustee of the trust funds, which has nothing to do with the planning board, but I just happen to be the trustee of the trust funds. And the scholarships presented by this town, the school, high school, have been given out. And what they have to do is they have to submit their applications to me and they have all the information about name, address, and everything. And then I have to process the, processing the checks and get them back to either the school or the, or the student, whatever way they want. So that's now ready to happen and we cut off by November 1st. So somewhere between now and November 1st, all the scholarships should be sent in to me.
For college?
They were approved by the town.
That have been approved by the school.
That have been approved by the school department.
Good.
Great. Any other?
There's nothing going on. We're just waiting to see what's going on here, that may impact.
We need to get the CIP process started and that was a good prompt for me to get some emails out to people.